Dr. Harris. Broadcast has been set.
Can it wait Director Morrison or you need to?
No, that's fine. I something was flashing on my screen saying that this is a practice session, so. I just wanted to know if I was the only one getting it.
Oh, no, it's all it's all right. We just we just got started here. All right. Um, good evening, everyone. The time is four forty eight P M on May sixteenth. Uh, the Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting will come to order. Uh, good evening again. Welcome to our meeting. My name is Dr. Kim Harris. I am the Chair of this committee. Uh, and a member of the board is a pleasure to welcome you to the the committee meeting this evening. Um, Ms. Adeline, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Harris? Dr. Harris?
Present.
Ms. Buddha Strather?
Present.
Donald Bell?
Here.
Kate Colat, is it Wendelik?
Yeah, here.
Yasi Gomez? Joseph Jakuta?
Present.
Christina Wap?
Present.
Timothy Meyer?
Present.
Dorothy Morrison?
Present.
David Noto?
Present.
Beth Novick?
Present.
Ramon Pelicia Calvo?
Present.
Benjamin Roach? Antoine Thompson? James Garcia?
Present.
Maya Gudera?
Present.
Olivia Thomas?
Present.
Sophia Villar? And Mikel Witherspoon?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Adeline. And I am so excited to see some new faces and some new names on our screen tonight, and we'll get around to that momentarily. Um, let's move into adopting the meeting agenda. Uh, so the motion on the floor, or may I have a motion on the floor to adopt the May sixteenth? Uh, twenty twenty four Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting Agenda.
I move to adopt the May sixteenth twenty twenty four Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting Agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, um. Are there any objections? So we don't have to do a roll call again. Any objections to adopting the the meeting agenda? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, the motion passes to accept the May sixteenth twenty twenty four meeting agenda. Okay, moving on to. Adoption of the meeting minutes. Uh, so adoption of the meeting minutes from the previous meeting are April third twenty twenty four meeting. Of the Climate Change Action Plan Committee. May I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes? Of April third? Twenty twenty four.
I move to adopt the minutes from the April twenty third meeting.
April third?
Sorry, April third.
Okay, may I have a second?
Joseph Jakuta seconded.
Thank you. All right. Any objections to the adoption of the April third twenty twenty four meeting minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, the meeting minutes are approved. All right, we will drop it to two point oh here, the adoption of, uh, oh, actually, no, I'm gonna jump to two point one for our introductions. I'm a. I'm so excited to be welcoming our new student members of the committee. I would love for, I'm not sure if Ms. Novick or if Mr. Bell, you'd like to do it. Uh, but I give the floor to either of you after I acknowledge Ms. Adeline, um, for a comment.
Yeah, can you say one more time who moved to approve the minutes?
That'd be. Ti- Timothy Meyer didn't made the first motion and then Joseph Jakuta.
All right, the floor is yours, uh, Ms. Novick.
I'm sitting in front of the window at the new school, watching the groundhogs and the birds, but it makes the lighting kind of weird. For me to interact with my computer, so sorry about that. Um, we have four student members. Uh, Donna Bell and I worked together to invite these young folks to participate. Um, from Kenmore, Olivia Thomas is a seventh grader. And James Dubon Garcia is an eighth grader. They are both in my environmental topics club. Um, they bring a variety of talents to the group. Uh, James is very. Um, media savvy and capable of telling a story. Um, through social media. He has started a student account on Instagram and, um. He created that video that I shared earlier, the student's perspective of the S E A S. And then Olivia is. Just highly motivated, and I asked for recommendations for from the seventh grade science teacher for a student that might have long term potential in the area of, um. Climate Change Action Interest or Advocacy for the Environment or those kind of things, and she was recommended. And then Maya and Michael, I did not know them previously, but Donald Bell recommended both of them. I met them at the Student Environmental Alliance Symposium. I got those right, right? Um, and really recognized them as leaders in the field already and being active and engaged and motivated. So there we go, four young people, um, stepping up and stepping into position and attending tonight after. A long day of who knows what. We did M C A P at Kenmore, so I don't know what everybody else did.
After a long day, a long, long day. I'm not sure, Mr. Bell, do you want to say anything before I turn the floor over? To these students, just to say hello to us and bring us greetings. I'm so proud of you all for being here. Thank you for joining us tonight. Mr. Bell, anything to add?
No, just, uh, proud of what the students are already, um, doing. They they met with, uh, Ms. Novick. Um, at at the Student Environment Alliance Summit, they had the parachute. Uh, they were interacting with our guests, with fellow students, as well as the exhibitors to showcase. Um, the different components of our Climate Change Action Plan and actually obtained signatures and, um. Notes and and sort of, uh, best wishes moving forward. Um, on that, sort of as a living document or artifact, uh, which was a really awesome activity. So I'm glad they got to exhibit. And really showcase that and looking forward to, uh, seeing everything that, you know, that they have already contribute contributing. And will contribute to the group. So kudos, students.
Very good. So now I'll just go around the room quickly, um, for our students. If there is something that you'd like to say, just just welcome, hello, we'd love to love to hear you, um. And 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 welcome you to this group. So let me start with, uh, Ms. Thomas.
Hello. My name's Olivia. And I'm very to be here. Thank you.
We're happy to have you. Happy to have you. All right, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, hello, good afternoon. Uh, my name's James, and I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to have this opportunity to work with Olivia.
We're 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 honored to work with you as well. Uh, Ms. Gudera, is that right?
Hello, I'm Maya Gudera. I'm from One Park Middle School, eighth grader. Um, you know, as everybody else said, I'm really grateful to be here and here where we all. Would you guys all have to say about this topic and be able to be a part of it, be a student voice in this situation?
Thanks for thanks for being here. And then last, I lost the last one. Where are you? Witherspoon, Mikel? There you are. This Mr. Witherspoon, there you are.
Hi. I'm sorry. I camera isn't on. I'm sorry, this is an amazing opportunity.
Well, tell you what, it was pretty hard. It was pretty hard to hear you there, but I will say just a a firecracker of energy. I got the opportunity to meet. To meet him at Bowie State University, and I'm just so, so energetic and and happy to have them as a member of this committee. Um, so thank you so much for those brief introductions. We're we're excited. We're ready to get started, ready to get the work. Uh, started here. Let's move quickly into section two point two for. Uh, both our successes and our challenges around acquiring our electric bus, electric school buses and supporting infrastructure. As I noted at our first meeting, we'll take the time during these committee meetings to, um. To boil down certain topics and not try to eat the, you know, a whole elephant at once, just one bite at a time rather. And so this week we'll be discussing. Um, school buses as one of our topics. So I'll turn the floor over to Director Morrison and Mr. Baldwin here, uh, to give us a brief update. So, Mr. Baldwin.
All right. Thank you, Chair Harris. And members of the Ad Hoc Committee, the C C A P, for the opportunity to discuss our journey. Um, into the electric school bus and supporting infrastructure. Um, I have a simple presentation this evening divided into five categories outlining a roadmap. Uh, for our electrification plan here. So I'm going to share my screen. All right. Can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, awesome. So, as I came aboard last July, this was one of the first, um, topics on my desk. Was, um, the C C A P program and our school bus electrification program. Uh, we had a partner already by way of the J L L Consulting Firm. In September of twenty twenty three, they developed a comprehensive long-term strategy plan. For fleet electrification and infrastructure, uh, which included procurement support. This report provided valuable insights into our fleet composition, operations, um, market analysis, deep depot assessments. Ownership models, uh, contain both a short and long-term investment strategy plans. We've used this report as a guide in creating a roadmap, um, that's going to be presented here the next few slides. The roadmap here is derived from the W R I Institute. Uh, it provided a template for us that we found very valuable for us. Uh, systematically capturing our story for future funding opportunities. This template allowed us to tailor our roadmap to our needs while ensuring we address critical areas for successful implementation. As you can see here, we divided it into our foundation settings, charging infrastructure and operational planning, procurement and installation. Um, training, testing and deployment and performance benefits and scaling. So under the foundation setting, the first objective was to build and educate a project team. This team included our fleet operations staff, school bus vendors, manufacturers, engine vendors like Cummins. Our utility companies like B G and E, P G C P S Facility Operations Staff and Contractors Associated with this project. Uh, we are currently holding weekly meetings to discuss our electrification plans. Currently focusing on our Mulliken Bus Lot Project. These meetings have laid the groundwork for future discussions in other areas as needed. Additionally, we are focusing on researching funding and financing options as well as engaging key stakeholders. The second slide here is charging infrastructure and operational planning. Three major areas that we're focusing on here, conducting facility assessments. Uh, and this is again looking at our site constraints, our cost upgrade, our electrical infrastructure. Uh, developing charging. Uh, infrastructure plan. This is our long-term planning with utilities, and this goes into creating our microgrid. And then we want to develop an operational plan. Uh, this operational plan involves route planning for our buses, parking arrangements, our charging schedules. So examples of that. When we talk about an accept for procurement and installation. Three main objectives here, uh, procuring buses and other services. Currently, we have acquired twenty one electric school buses through grant funding. We've applied for fifteen additional buses via the E P A Electric School Bus Rebate Program. Um, hopefully, we should hear something by the end of the month, whether or not we have been approved for this rebate. Uh, for those additional fifteen electric school buses. We, uh, want to select and procure chargers. Uh, we've secured a temporary charging solution right now. Uh, consisting of three trailers that have. A charging station on the trailer, um, is powered by a propane generator on the on the trailer. So pretty interesting concept right now. Uh, it was purchased as a temporary solution. Uh, until we were able to have permanent charging stations, uh, at the Mulliken Bus Lot. And third here, upgrading facilities to install electrical infrastructure. Uh, we're beginning our upgrades at one facility for our school bus electrification, that is the Mulliken Bus Lot. Uh, our concern here is that we have twelve bus depots across the county, but only three have garages. Uh, for our mechanics to work. And so the remaining nine do not have what I consider covered facilities. So we have staff that are working in the elements, performing maintenance on our school buses. Training, testing and deployment. Getting our electric school buses road-ready involves the collaboration between our fleet staff, drivers, maintenance personnel and first responders in the county. These buses require a unique emergency handling procedures and certifications, um, are mandatory before operating. Not unlike our diesel school buses. The manufacturer, the manufacturer provides most of the training on handling the electric school buses. The training and testing, uh, are done once these buses are in our possessions. Uh, we want to ensure that we scrutinize these buses as much as possible to make sure that they are fully tested. And all equipment functions properly. The prep work needed to get the electric school bus on the road involves many staff. Uh, these buses require a different way of handling, um, emergencies. The certifications that must be achieved on them before the electric school bus operates versus a diesel bus is very different. The performance, the benefits and scaling. Establishing our procedures for tracking and monitoring bus performance is crucial for improving air quality and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Gathering qualitative feedback from stakeholders will help evaluate the project's success and align it with our roadmap strategies. So here, we want to leverage the project, learning and other impacts, uh, create opportunities for STEAM students. And continue to update our roadmaps for scaling. Um, as we build our fleet, uh, our initiative is for by twenty forty, we would like to have all of our school buses, uh, to be totally electric. Here is just a kind of a simple roadmap. Um, what we've tried to do with the twenty one buses that are currently, uh, is to. Slowly implement them over the course of this year, uh, to be able to. Implement all five stages that we just discussed and gather information, gather data, uh, to report out so that we can have a story to tell. Uh, we are working on a funding plan because right now our funding strictly is grant-supported. It costs roughly around four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the cost of the electric school bus. And so that's three times the cost of a diesel bus currently. And so. We are still working how to fully fund that in our current budget system, uh, building out a cost replacement cycle. Between our diesel bus and our electric school bus. So here's a a timeline in which we are working toward. Uh, to hitting all five of those categories that we've been working on. So this was just a short, brief presentation of 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 what we've been working on pertaining to our electrification. Uh, program for buses, and I would now just open up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Baldwin. Um, colleagues, we'll be limiting our comments to, uh, each each committee member will have two and a half minutes for their comments or feedback. And we'll have two rounds unless we vote to have an additional round. Uh, feel free to raise your hand. I'll call you in the order that I I do see you. Um, and we'll go, we'll proceed from there. Um, so if anyone has questions, please feel free to raise their hand now. Um, Director Baldwin, one question while I wait for my colleagues potentially. Um, can you go back one slide for me?
Sure.
Um. So according to this, you all are currently in the that procurement. Part of your your journey, more or less. Now, is that procurement purely the the pick procurement of the buses from the potential grant opportunities? Or are there other things you're ordering as well?
Um, infrastructure, charging stations as well, sir.
Okay, so it's not limited to just the buses?
No.
You go to, so I see Ms. Novick, and then I'll go to Mr. Noto. In that order.
Okay, I have, uh, first, I was just wondering, is anything like this already being done someplace else that the? There's a model for this? They already have the buses? They're already putting them on the streets?
Oh, yes. So Montgomery County is leading the the state right now on the electrification process. They, I think, right now have close to eighty electric school buses on the road. And so we talk regular, um, about how they're doing, uh, their plans. Um, it's pretty interesting. Kind of glad that we're not the first ones because they are, um, you know, they they're. It's it's been a challenge for them. It's not always, uh, an easy road, but it's nice to know that they're getting hit and they're willing to share. Some of the challenges that they've faced so that we don't have to fall in that same road as we start our journey as well.
Thank you. Um, I heard you say that at some point, students would be involved through like STEM or STEAM. And I met with kids today, we had the, um, the. Sakofa Bus through Maryland National Park and Planning was here to talk about climate change action. Um, that was the topic. They met with the students and transportation came up, and I said we'd be at a meeting tonight, and did they have any questions? And the students had, um, two questions. They were curious about the design of the bus. Could they see, um, what that would look like, what the buses look like? And one student said, could they have input on the design of the interior of the bus? Because it's very difficult to carry a cello on a bus, and they want to make sure there's storage space for their, um, items. So that's student wonderings today.
Um, interesting. That's something that, uh, we can definitely work on that. Um, it'd be, it's it's something, it's funny that we we talk about the interior design of the bus. Because, uh, it seems like it gets smaller and smaller each model year. Uh, I know we bring it up to the manufacturer as well, so, um, it might be interesting to to get the student input on that. And share that with the bus manufacturer.
Uh, one last comment. It might be great to take the buses on a tour to schools and let kids get enthusiastic about this transition.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kovik. We'll go to Mr. Noto and then Ms. Quoc. Follow Mr. Noto.
Uh, thanks. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, thank you for the presentation. I had two quick questions. The first had to do with, um, you mentioned on this slide. That the cost of an electric bus is significantly greater than the cost of a diesel bus. Um, are you aware if the long-term, uh, maintenance fees of an electric bus would. Mitigate that cost somewhat compared to a diesel bus?
You know that? We have not reached that point yet, sir. Uh, number one, we we always talk about the the maintenance and repair. Uh, right now, the E P A has a lot of restrictions with emissions with the diesel bus. So right now, the emissions are pretty much spitting out water that comes out the diesel exhaust. Uh, we always talk about the after-treatment process for the for the conversion of the exhaust system. Has been really restrictive on the industry and on the manufacturers, on the engine manufacturers. And so, uh, it has a lot of our, um, the the engine manufacturers. Leaving the diesel engine and and going into another production. Like, we've seen a lot of. Partners go back to the gas engine, or they're going to propane, um, or they're going to the electric side from that standpoint. When you talk about the electric side, folks talk about the cost of the battery. So, right now, how long does an electric bus battery last? And we're getting somewhere between that eight to ten-year mark. And so when you think about that, that's the life cycle, uh, of that, of 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 the bus. And the replacement cost of that battery right now, as I've been told, is roughly one hundred thousand dollars. So when you consider the life cycle of a replacement of a battery versus the maintenance cost, the diesel bus usually will last us twelve years. And over time, depending on how the bus is driven, that maintenance cost could be up to a hundred thousand dollars. It could be less, less. So, uh, we're waiting, actually, we're waiting on on some other figures that talks about the life cycle and and the maintenance repair. Um, with the with the electric bus versus that diesel, for cost-wise. That's a good question, though. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Harris, would you mind if I ask one more question briefly?
Um, I would need to come back to you for around.
Okay, that's fair enough.
It was at a process and procedure there. Um, but I'll I'll note you for round two, all right? So I'll circle back around to you, um, Ms. Quoc, and then, uh, who was next? Mr. Pelencia Calvo.
Thank you so much. Um, along the lines of maintenance, um, I'm really curious about sort of the people. Um, behind, uh, the electrification process and. What are the plans of, um, the county to either recruit, train, reskill, upskill? When it comes to, um, the training component that you mentioned in your in your presentation. Um, are there, you know, plans to recruit more folks? Uh, I don't even know what the maintenance requirements are. If it requires more staff or fewer staff that have different skills. And just kind of curious to hear, um, what the plan is around people. Um, whether that's the fleet, staff, maintenance staff, first responders, I heard also were thrown, uh, in there in your presentation. So, yeah, just really curious if you could talk a little bit about the people.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I will start with the support staff for the people, so that definitely will involve, um, the our fleet technicians, mechanics. Definitely always need more mechanics. Uh, what this involves in dealing with the electrification side is more certifications. Um, basically, they have to know how to connect, disconnect the battery of the bus. It's a little different than what is connecting the battery of your car. And so there's a certification that they have to go through that is done by the manufacturer from that standpoint. And that is something that in terms of my staff of fleet operators have to learn. And we would want our first responders within the county to be a part of that as well. Uh, we, matter of fact, I was at a a conference, um. At a director's meeting last week, and we had this very same conversation about what happens if my electric school bus catches fire? In the middle of the street. And, um, some of my colleagues have been told by their emergency management folks that they're just gonna let the bus burn. Clear everything around and just let it burn. If it takes four hours or if it takes sixteen hours, that's, they're just gonna let it burn. So that wasn't a good answer for me. So I want our folks to be prepared and to be able to handle that accordingly. So, uh. Far as staffing wise, we can never have enough. I think the resources there for training, uh, is there, is just building the resources up for support. Um, in terms of training our drivers and having them eligible, the the work is there, their endorsements are there. For them to drive the bus, it's just taking on the training. Uh, as you know, we're still short drivers, so we're always looking to recruit and hire. Uh, as you know, we're still short drivers, so we're always looking to recruit and hire more. That will never stop. Uh, it would just be incorporating additional training for them.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Novick, if, do you have another question? Is your hand up for round two? Just so I know, as I'm getting the order. Okay. Uh, so next we'll go to Mr. Palencia Calvo, and then Mrs. Jakuta and Ms. Wonderlick in that order.
Thank you, and uh, thank you so much uh for the presentation, and uh congratulations on those twenty-one. Buses, and I believe some of them are already on the road. Uh, I have a have a, I guess, a couple of uh questions, and um. Uh, I'm curious to know where would you need more um additional support to launch this program or to scale up this program? There's a number of programs and opportunities to support. You know, you know the financial opportunities, but also technical opportunities. You know, for the planning as well as for the um deployment of the buses. There are federal opportunities that. Come to the district and support with all of that. So um, that is one of my questions, and the other um additional support and the other. So far, what type of challenges have you encountered with this initial deployment of buses or the planning phase? Uh, yeah, be curious to to learn more about that.
Okay. Great questions. So let's start with the latter, challenges. Uh, number one, financial challenges are number. Uh, because we do not have a budget in place to purchase the electric school buses and the infrastructure. Uh, to support it, and the infrastructure on that side would be the chargers. In addition to this, uh, our facility upgrades. Uh, the basic pieces. We don't have enough garages right now. Uh, to support fully functionally the electric school bus initiative. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we have technicians, mechanics that are working in the elements to change tires, change brakes. Changing the oil of school buses in the elements day in and day out. I would much prefer them to have a colored, a covered facility such as a garage uh to work. To fully support the electric school bus initiative, we need a covered facility. Uh, we cannot work on the electric school bus in the elements. Uh, and so that's part of what we're doing right now with the Mulliken Bus Project. And some of the contract work is done is to have at least a canopy. So that we can park those buses um. In over a covered area. From that standpoint, and have a garage for them to work. So that's the number one challenge, sir, right there, is just facility upgrades to support it. Heard it to be there, so.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Jakuta, I think you were next.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Baldwin, and I'm I'm really heartened to see how you're, you know, going about this method. Methodically, um, it's really important for the long-term success of the rollout. Um, so many questions to ask. Um, I I'll stick with the the funding question. Um, there, under the IRA, there's uh refundable tax credits that should be available for electric vehicles. And I'm wondering if you have looked, how have you looked into that? And um, what sort of challenges have been faced with trying to make that a reality?
That is a great question. Uh, I have, we have investigated. Um, there's a team that helps with the financial outlook of that, and so uh I depend on that group. To investigate and let me know if that's a a good step in moving into that direction. Because with that IRA tax credit, not only does it fall under transportation, it also falls under facility management as well. And so I think as a district, we've looked at it on a comprehensive level, not just solely for transportation. And uh, and so uh, while I can't give you a direct answer on that, um, I probably would have to come back and give you. Uh, exactly what the outcome on why or why not we are not using the IRA tax credit component.
Okay.
Okay?
Um, also, I guess on the funding uh element, um, the new teen heavy-duty grant program is open. And I'm wondering if you're looking at that program for some additional federal funds.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Not, I will tell you that uh we do have a group that's looking at every funding. Um, not every opportunity is a good fit for PG CPS. So we do scrutinize every opportunity, but that one, sir, we do and will take advantage of that. Heavy-duty grant.
Yeah, well, if you need letters of support or anything, do do let the community know.
Oh.
And the worker. Thank you.
Most definitely. Thank you for saying, recommending that.
Ms. Wonder.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. This is, was a great presentation. I appreciate all the information. Uh, one question I had is focused on performance and um what measures of success that you have um to track and. Um, monitor throughout the program, and and if you have similar ones that compare to the diesel buses. To to be able to see that um, the the benefits that you have with e-buses versus diesel.
So, great question. Um, as we get started, that was one of the first things that we have asked is. What type of data can we show the benefits uh from that standpoint? And so that's a question that we are still talking about. But I can tell you what we're looking at um. Are the routes and the battery range of those routes. Uh, we're looking at the area on where we want to serve. If it's an area of high carbon emission. Uh, what we can use to help define um the impact of student air quality from that standpoint. We're looking at revenue with battery capacity. Route performance. So there are several things that we have been tossing around, uh, but we definitely want to figure out. What uh is going to give us the better bang for evaluating the purpose and the use of the bus? So if you have suggestions, I would be more than happy to take some of those as as well.
Right, thanks. Yeah, I'm happy to talk about it sometime. Also, just, you know, there's technical measures of success, there's financial measures of success. And then don't forget about the users and so just setting up the infrastructure to be able to collect all that information. When you hit the ground running, and and then importantly, comparing it to. Um, you know, status quo, so you're able to show a difference, but thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that.
Does that conclude your time, Ms. Wonderlick? You've got twenty seconds.
Dove, I'm early.
All right, I'll move on here. Um, oh, great. One of our students, Mr. Witherspoon.
Um, yes, hello, can you walk in?
Yes.
Hi, so um, I remember hearing earlier about the temporary solution that you all have for the electric buses. The retailers that are powered by propane. I was wondering for the permanent. Charging stations for the buses, is it also going to be powered by propane, or is there another energy source?
Great question. No. So the permanent charging stations will be electric. Uh, we will have those wired to a grid um at the Mulliken Bus Lot.
Thank you. And, oh, wait. Can I ask another question now, or do I ask it in the next round?
No, you're free to ask now. You've got a minute and thirty seconds. A little, actually, more than that.
Um, I was also wondering, um, so we're replacing the diesel buses with the electric buses. What are we gonna do with the diesel buses once they've been replaced with electric buses?
Good question. A lot of times what happens, uh, we sell the diesel bus. We're obligated by the state to keep a diesel bus for a certain number of years, and then we sell it. Uh, but through grant processes, uh, if we are awarded a grant. In most cases, uh, by order of the grant, they like us to uh decommission a diesel bus. And that means we can't sell it. We have to basically decommission it, and they want us to drive. A nice hole through the engine block, so make it incapable of being driven again from that standpoint. So sometimes they wanted to, they want us to do that if it's a grant-funded opportunity. But most times we sell it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your question. Before we, let's see. Former Boozer Strathers for round one. So I'll let you go first, uh, colleague, and then I'll pass it to you, so then I can ask a question.
All right, great, thanks. Um, hearing from Michael, I was uh thinking about the opportunity. That I saw quite a bit a couple of years ago when we were working on this to can take those diesel buses and replace the engine. Is that technology for conversion taking off? Is that? Is that going to be an option for PG CPS, or is that, is that just not moving as quickly as? As some of the the folks with, who would like to see this happen?
Well, uh, that is a great question. Um, we've, the the discussion around that. Um, I think that the. The inception of it is a little bit more troublesome, um, per se. And 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 we're talking about alternative sources. Like biodiesel or some alternative fueling, per se, uh, that that's offered up. What my folks are telling me a little bit about it, that um, the changeover. Is more of a hassle than actually um keeping the regular diesel in place. And so we're trying to get a little bit more smarter with that and getting more information to ensure, because I've been asked about that directly. Uh, remember, uh, is that something viable as a stopgap measure between now? The use of diesel and converting over to electric? And is, is it cost-effective to do that?
Yeah, uh, thanks for that update. I did, I did see that our committee member Antoine Thompson had a major press release today on biodiesel. Conversion for a fleet in DC, so um, I I'm hearing, I'm seeing the. You know, between now and twenty forty, how do we mitigate, can we mitigate diesel, even if it's not? The ideal of the clean energy, you know, uh, powered electric bus.
Right, right.
Yeah, it sounds like that could, that could come up for PG CPS as these technologies become more accessible and particularly grant-funded. To, to switch that diesel engine to biodiesel.
It is. Um, we've also thrown around the ideal potentially about propane.
All right, great. Thanks for, thanks for giving us some of those other options. My time is up.
I'll go to Ms. Ms. Thomas. Sorry, I see you, uh, Mr. Palencia Calvo. We're just going through round one right now. So Ms. Thomas.
Okay, so I, if I heard correctly, you said we're selling the diesel buses, um. Well, like during a specific time. And I want to know if uh the money we get from the diesel buses could possibly go to the electrical buses.
So, great question. So typically, by the time that we kind of sell those school buses. Uh, they have reached their life limit with us. And so the amount that they are sold for kind of goes back into a general fund. And and that's due to board policy in which those funds go back. So um, we would have to do some heavy lobbying to get some of those funds allocated back to transportation. You want to write a letter for me?
Thank you.
All right, Boomer Boozer Strider, I'm gonna turn it over to you for a second so I can ask a question.
All right, I recognize you.
Thank you. So thank you uh for your presentation, Director Baldwin. Um, given the. The community's concerns and gripes that we've had with um tracking our bus fleet. Are there any technologies already built into these new modern electric buses that can uh help uh? With the concerns around either Stop Finder or GPS for some of our our school bus fleets or anything like that? Are we looking at buses that have those technologies, or is that just totally separate? I just want to put that conversation on the table.
Uh, totally separate, sir. One, right now, if there's any monitoring information related to the electric school bus. It's all related to the engine and the battery systems of that bus. That go back to some type of monitoring s- system or station. Um, status of that bus.
I just think about it from a community standpoint, or, you know, someone that's new to electric vehicles, they'll say, you know, like a Tesla or a. Or a hot air or something like that. They have those systems in place where you can track it on an app from your phone, right? And so if you're thinking about an electric bus, for example, why wouldn't it come with that technology? That's the exact same thing as a car. Um, and I've heard that, I've heard that concern when I talk to folks within District Seven, so. I figured I put that out there, that it it's just something that the, the technology isn't, not, it's not available, but it's it's not on these buses, per se. Um, and so we'll continue to tackle that in a, in a separate, a separate manner, but to and to ask the follow-up question to that, will we? Will we be able to utilize the same systems that we use on our diesel buses, on our electric buses, or will we have to choose something else?
No, same systems. Same systems, mm-hmm. Camera systems, GPS systems, uh, all of the same.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's my question and my time.
All right, give the floor back to you to continue.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna start round. Whoops, muted myself. We're gonna start round two, so we'll go to Mr. Palencia Calvo, and then Mr. Noto. If you had a question for round two, I remember uh you wanted to continue, so if that is still true, you'll go after, after. And then Mr. Jakuta following, Mr. Noto, if he does have a question.
Thank you. Uh, um, Ms. Baldwin, I have a a good question. Um. Are you planning on deploying the buses in a way that advances equity uh within the school district? Kind of prioritizing either depots or Rato or areas with high pollution in the county? What are some of those plans?
So, great question. Uh, right now, we were introduced to a screening tool. Webpage that gives us by county the areas in the county that has the highest carbon emissions. And if you can imagine for PG County, uh, the northern end, all areas that pretty much border DC. And so right now, we are talking about how we can serve that. Uh, the problem for me is we don't have the space to actually. Keep the buses or keep the electric buses in an area or in a bus depot right now with the charging stations that we have. So we have ideals, for example, the John Hanson Bus Lot in Oxon Hill is an ideal bus lot. That's right in the area where where this screening tool has shared that that's an area. That has high carbon emissions. Uh, we're looking at the area, um, Hyattsville area. Is another area that has high carbon emissions, but my bus lots there, uh, my Bladensburg bus lot. Possibly my Greenbelt Fairmont bus lots, those buses, those lots are at capacity. And so we would have to do some finagling to keep buses there to serve that area. So um, for next school year, we do want to be able to deploy buses. I can't say that we'll be able to deploy the number of buses that we won't. But we will be able to deploy some buses in those targeted areas. And hopefully, uh, I I'm working on a plan to where we'll be able to share that with you. So everybody, you know, be be full transparent to let you see where these high-carbon areas of emissions are. And and we do our best to put buses in those areas to serve our students better.
Thank you.
Um, sorry, gentlemen, I have to break the order, because I see Mr. Bell is here for round one, so we'll go to Mr. Bell, then Ms. Noto.
Thank you so much. Um, I just had a a question on. Um, I I think we have a few of the the buses on the road. Um, I, I think we have a few of the, the buses on the road. And I'm wondering about feedback from staff or even the users and the students. On what their experience has been so far, uh, with the electric buses.
I have not received, um, oh, a lot of negative feedback about the bus. The first thing I hear is, is very quiet. That's the first thing, always. Uh, the, uh, aside from the ride, you know, on the, on the interior of the bus. You always have to raise your voice, um, sitting on the bus. Well, on the electric bus, you do not because it's so quiet. Um, you can have, you know, being a former teacher, you have your voice levels, the inside voice, outside voice, the cafeteria voice. So you can keep your inside voice, uh, on the bus. Um, um, from that standpoint. So that's the first thing. Uh, the second thing from a driver's standpoint, um, is, is the easy, the ease of the, of the drive. I don't know if many of you drive an electric vehicle, but, um, we, there's a component they call regenerative braking. So as you accelerate, you accelerate. But as soon as you let your foot off the accelerator, the bus immediately slows. And what that does, it starts to, uh, that brake. And that braking power generates additional energy that goes back into the battery. Right? And so that's why we want to kind of keep the bus in a high populated area. To allow the bus to stop as many times because each time it starts to slow down. It generates batter, generates energy that goes back into that battery to help sustain it for this ride. So it gives us a better opportunity to be able to use that bus for both the morning trip and the PM trip. Uh, which is funny, as I had conversations with my colleagues, um, in other districts. How they only use the bus basically for one trip. It's either gonna use it for the morning and they have to get on the diesel bus for the PM or vice versa. So we want to be smart and be able to use that bus for the entire day.
Or Mr. Noto, then, uh, Mr. Jakuta.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Um, Director Baldwin, this is sort of a follow up to, uh, Mr. Witherspoon's question about the. Buses, uh, being charged with propane and being put onto the, um. Permanent, uh, grid system. It, based off of what you've been saying about not having sufficient space, um. In the lots as it stands currently, to have all of that charging equipment on site in, in the current, in the lots. As they stand right now, um. What is the hookup system for these electric buses going to be? Is it going to be? Just to the regular, to the grid at large, or is it going to be off of like a separate microgrid? Like if there were, I don't know, solar panels hooked up to the roof of, uh, the facility there? If you wouldn't mind kind of. Thank you.
Yep. So right now with the, with the trailers, uh, they, it has a charging station. With basically, um, two dispensers. So each line has a dispenser that can attach to the bus. So right now I have a level three, a fast charger, um, on the trailer. So with two dispensers. So basically I can charge a bus roughly in two hours, um, that has depleted a charge. So we can park the bus basically, um, on both sides of the trailer and plug in. And we're good to go. The other trailers that I have will have two level two chargers on it. And each will have two dispensers. So I can charge four buses at one time. And those are level two, which will charge better overnight type. So we will be able to park four buses around that trailer and plug them in. So if you think about the daisy look per se, uh, that's kind of how it would look. Uh, right now for the charging trailers. The permanent solution that we are looking for at the Mulliken Bus Lot would consist of a solar canopy. Uh, would the charging stations that would, um, they're gonna be plugged. It would be a pull-in, we, the bus would be pulling, pull in and the charging stations would be at the front. Um, and we would have to take that dispenser and plug it into the bus. And that charging station will be connected to the solar canopy. And that would be then be connected to, um, the, our grid, the microgrid from that standpoint. So I don't know, uh, a, a, a prime example, what they've told me, I have not been able to take a, a full view yet. Is the Montgomery County Transit Association, um, the Brooksville site. Uh, they have the model solution in which we are kind of pulling our model from. And they have the solar canopy setup for their transit. Not the school bus side, but their transit side. That's the model that we are, that we've chosen, that we wanted for our school bus side. So, uh, we have planned for up to ninety charging stations, um, for, for us. At the Mulliken site, uh, we've already started breaking ground. Uh, it's, it was, we're actually doing a facility upgrade there at that site. So it's actually going to be three phases. So we're in phase one now of upgrading the actual facility where transportation will have a separate building right now instead of a trailer. Phase two would be then clearing the parking lot to clear space to build the chargers. And then, um, um, excuse me, I said the chargers, the canopy with the chargers. And then three would be building additional parking spaces, uh, at that, at that location. So. Hope that might have been too much, but I hope that answers your question, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Jakuta.
Well, I'm glad you said that because I was going to ask if you had, uh, looked at the Montgomery County facility. So I'll, I'll defer to a different question then. But first I wanted to make one, uh, small statement. I would be cognizant that, uh, you should be cognizant that there are, um, there's countervailing claims with the biodiesel issue. The ICCP, these were the same, this was the research group that found that Volkswagen was cheating on their emission systems with diesel. Has discovered that there's a lot of evidence that, uh, biodiesel emissions, biodiesel increases emissions from vehicles. So, um, it, it's, uh, more up to date science. So be very careful on that one. But I wanted to, uh, um, kind of ask about the, as, as a back to funding plus the microgrid. And that is ask if you've looked into the vehicle grid technology in particular. If you've looked into the Pepco pilot program that came with the Climate Solutions Now Act. This, I know that that could be a, a, a different way to fund these buses.
The Pepco, say it again, you said the Pepco funding?
Oh, sorry. It was not necessary Pepco. It's, uh, what the various utilities, Pepco or BGNE. Sorry, I'm a Pepco territory. I always forget about BGNE.
Yep, yep. So right now, um, we, we've pretty much been talking to, uh, BGNE. And, uh, while I've not directly been in those talks about that standpoint, I can, I can find out more information. Uh, our contractor friends, JLL, they kind of lead that charge in talking with the utility companies. Along with, uh, members of our, um, is it the OAID, um, department? Um, alternative planning. This is, uh, Director Sean Matlock's, um, department. They're leading the charge with the Mulliken Bus Lot and electrification plan on that side, on, on the facility maintenance side. So they can share more information, but I can pull some of that and, and, and get back to you.
Okay, that would be great. But you guys, I think, I think the program comes with the ability to, to lease buses at a very low cost. If you can then provide the batteries to, uh, to back up the grid essentially. So, um, it's. It's something to consider.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I, I, I realize that, um, we have a. We just entered into a MOU with a company. Uh, that helped build the structure for Montgomery County Transit. Um, and, and their microgrid as well. It's new for me. So, um, I have to kind of. Put on my learning hat and, and get back and start reading some more on how that's going to be done. Thank you for sharing that though.
Ms. Clock.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Baldwin, you started your presentation off by, um. Wanting to tell a story. And I'd like to lean into that a little bit more and curious to hear more about what story you're hoping PG CPS will tell. When it comes to e, e-buses, not only to the community, but importantly to the students, um. If you can maybe elaborate a little bit on that.
Right, right. Well, I'm hoping, uh, that the work that we are doing right now. To learn more about the electrification process with the buses that we have, the, um. The support from the technical, the financial, the operational, the facility, all of that ties in to our story. And documenting it along the way, the good and the bad, that we can use to help. Future, uh, when, when it's time for future funding opportunities. That we can say we've, we've, we've gone through this. And, and this is what we've gone through to understand what it takes to be successful with implementing an electrification plan. And so by granting us the funding, we know the due diligence it takes to make it successful. So that's what I mean about telling our story, uh, and, and, and coming out with great benefits that will. Positively affect the children in our county. Uh, because I, I, I really, I should have found, I'm, I probably need to find this, uh, website for this screening tool. Because we do have some of the highest emission, carbon emission areas in the state. And, and, and so having an active plan on how to address it from our end for transportation. It's just part of the plan. But it's something that collectively as a county, we all need to have a, a plan to address effectively. So my part is just one small piece of the pie to do what we can to address it.
Thank you.
And Ms. Novick.
Very briefly, I just wanted to say my appreciation for that, that, um, you said that. The buses will be in the high carbon areas first and that, um, addressing issues of asthma. And other health challenges for people is important. And I think that's a great part of the story to emphasize. So thank you for that.
No problem. And, and please, you know, this is not one-sided. So if you all have anything to share that, that obviously I may be missing, uh, please let me know. So we can add it because I do not want to leave anything unturned if it's going to benefit our children.
Then while I have time, I do just have one question and it could be like a ridiculous question. That's why I held off asking it. But I was wondering, why can't the buses and the charging stations be parked actually at schools? Like their first run in the morning? Is it because of like vandalism and things like that? But I was just wondering, seems like you could put a couple of charging stations at schools and start the buses off where they're going to leave from in the morning.
Yeah, there's a security piece to this. Um, we're not able to lock the school buses. That's one of the reasons why they are parked at depots right now. We're able to lock gates in, uh, but. There's a security piece, there's a liability piece. If anything were to happen while those buses are connected. Uh, to those charging stations and not being, um. Watched and monitored properly. We don't want anything to happen, um, to anyone that's tampering with it. As well as endangering the school. From that standpoint. So, um, one day maybe. But until we get a little bit smarter and, and increase a little bit of our safety enhancements at our schools, maybe. But just not right now.
Takes time to implement, I guess. Um, Director Morrison.
Hi, excuse me. So it was actually a follow-up question for, uh, Director Baldwin. I, he was referencing the screening tool. And I just wanted to ask him if he was referring to the, I believe it's proceed tool. Does that ring a bell?
It is the, um, it's the Maryland Environmental Justice Screening Tool.
Yeah, okay. So that's, okay. That's fine because there's all these screening tools that are being developed. And it's, it's a good thing because it's all about trying to figure out communities that may be, um, either adversely impacted by. Poor air quality or other pollution. Um, it may go into other social demographic, um, criteria. In order to be able to, um, provide benefits like the electric school bus and other, um, such school benefits in an equitable way. So this is something that we definitely wanted to do. Um, I was in a meeting this morning where we talked about developing such a tool. So that as we go about implementing the whole, um, CAP climate action, um, plan that we are looking at equity. That we're centering equity in all of this. So, um, so yeah.
Yep. I will share the website. I thought we could, I can't put it in the chat. There's no chat function here. So I will share that with you. Uh, because it's a great tool. It was introduced to me, a meeting that I sat into. It was a brand new tool. Uh, basically how it was introduced to me that said, hey, if you want any Maryland funding, you better use this tool in your, in your write-up for your grant. So I will.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm familiar with the Maryland, uh, Department of Environment. So, yeah.
Thank you, Director Morrison. That concludes your, your time. Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, yes. I didn't know if you're talking to me or somebody else. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Um, for your question, this robust discussion committee, thank you, uh, Director Baldwin for sticking with us. Um, seeing no further hands, I'm gonna let you off the stage. I appreciate that. If you could share the presentation. Um, actually, I think it's already been shared, um, with us. But, uh, colleagues, be sure to go and review that again or share with your community if that's necessary. Um, let's move on to section two point three, the Student Environmental Alliance Summit Feedback. And I'll turn the floor over to my colleague, uh, what member Pamela Boozer Strutter to, to give us feedback and some, some key points around. Around, uh, the, the summit.
Oh, oh, great. Thank you. Well, I, I, I think I would like to first defer to Donald Bell to introduce the. The summit, the two days of the summit and then have, um, student feedback. But I, I will say as a board member, it is incredible experience to be with the four hundred plus high school students. And I think in some middle school students over the two days. And we did capture two videos, one produced by the PG CPS Communications Division. And then, uh, James's excellent video as well. So. We will make sure those are archived properly. We could probably get those into board docs into the section, the link. So if you haven't seen them yet, we'll make sure everyone on the committee has them. But I do think hearing directly from. The, uh, students who experienced it would be really great at this time. Donald, if you want to say something first.
Uh, sure. No, thank you. Um, and it, there's a third video from PGCTV online. Um, as well that captures part of day two of the summit. Um, that we, we may want to look at throwing in there as well. It's on YouTube. Um, and so, uh, the Student Environmental Alliance Summit was held over two days, April twenty fifth and twenty ninth. Uh, it's a two-day summit for, for students, um, and we had about four hundred, approximately four hundred students attend. Over the course of the two days. Uh, so it's the largest summit that we've held. Um, last year was the largest and then, you know, we broke that record again. Um, that's a good record to break unlike, you know, the rising temperature every year. Um, we don't want to break that record, but we do want to break the student attendance record at the summit. Uh, and so day one is sort of an experiential field learning day. Um, students are outdoors all day at Bladensburg Waterfront Park. And they engage in a number of activities from, uh, we had a bike ride this year. Um, along the boardwalk there, Bladensburg Waterfront Park. It was our first experience, uh, with that. Um, a lot of good reviews from the students on that activity. Um, they almost always do a boat ride associated with it. And then we, we've, uh, mixed in some STEM oriented activities. So they looked at energy, uh, bird, um, birding, uh, from. uh, from native plant seeding, uh, where they actually planted seedlings that'll go out to our local parks um, as a service activity component, um, as well as looking at oysters, um, and issues related to oysters and mussels and restoration uh, in our environment. And they also had some fun activities like, uh, park, parkour that they engaged in on, in day one. And then day two, uh, there, there's some outdoor components, but it's, it's more of a traditional conference. If you will, with they're doing rotating workshops. Um, and each day there's a session where all the students come together and sort of have their general assembly for the day. And so on day two, uh, we were very fortunate, uh, to have Deputy Secretary on Don Graves be our keynote speaker, uh, for day two and gave some, um, enlightening words for the students. Uh, we also had, um, the director, the Prince George's County Government, um, uh, Department of Environment Director uh, speak there as well as others. Um, day two, they engaged in, um, some fun activities like archery. But they also rotated and spoke with representatives from the Smithsonian Environmental Research Center. Um, they talked with, uh, our four H and, uh, four H educators from the University of Maryland Extension. Um, as well as a number of other workshops and one of the sessions that they attend is called our Environmental Expo. And, um, some of the members of this committee, uh, were there representing. So, so thank you. Um, uh, Joseph and others, uh, for being part of that. And that's where they go around. We had thirty, thirty-two exhibitors. Uh, anywhere from University of Maryland, uh, to a local community organization that wants to get students involved. Um, and action projects on their school campus. Um, and so that's a little bit of taste, taste of day two, um, as well. Uh, I, the, the only other thing I'll add is that the students, uh, worked very hard uh, leading up to it. We try to put them in the driver's seat. Um, so they are running the show. Um, and I'm kind of their support and I'm working with them throughout as well as, uh, Ms. Novick and, and others. Um, but they host the event. Um, thank you to Board Member Harris for introducing uh, Deputy Secretary Don Graves does a, a perfect, um, segue into the keynote speaker. Um, and so appreciate all of the members of this committee i- in your various ways and means of moving the event forward.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Bill. Thank you for that recap of the event. In terms of student feedback, I don't know if anyone wants to go first. Anyone in particular wants to go first of our students, um, who are in attendance today. I'll turn the floor over to, to any of you. I don't want to call, call names.
And do, do you mind if I put out maybe a, a question to, to help with the feedback? I, and this comes from a conversation that I did have, uh, Maya Gudera about raising the level of awareness of being able to actually speak about climate change and climate mitigation and understanding that this is part of the future and is will be part of a hundred percent of everyone's careers, um, in some way, especially the mitigation. So, um, I put out Maya's question, did this increase uh, climate change literacy of your peers?
So I guess I'll just go ahead and start this off. Um, I will say with that question, I think since, although I didn't get to spend the full time during the two days of the summit. Um, with what I did see, especially specifically on the second day, I do remember there was, um, this one I'm thinking of, there is this one place where you had, uh, the VR goggles and you could kind of go through the area and see. And it's pretty much, uh, I believe it was pretty much the climate of the areas and it's kind of comparing different areas and the climate and how that kind of like affected it. And I think, yeah, that kind of did bring, um, a small part of awareness. I also remember there was soils and it kind of showed the different, um, I guess the one, the amount of water in it, which, you know. So although I can't say much about it because I didn't get to spend the full time, I do think that there was, um, a good amount of awareness brought to climate change, um, during the past, during those two days.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. Any other reflections?
So I just wanted to say that I loved how many students were there. Like there were a lot of students, mainly high schoolers, and I think that, uh, that was an amazing opportunity for students. And I think we should have like a lot more events like that, even for like elementary schoolers, middle schoolers, all, all, um, grade levels.
Thank you for that feedback.
Hey, James, are you still on here?
Uh, huh, yeah, I am. Um, so I.
Hey, I just want to ask, did you want to make the comment you made about, um, the, what you've learned in science in relationship to what you experienced on that day? I thought that was pretty significant.
Oh, yes. So, um, what, in one of my, uh, one day in science, um, we were working on a project where students had to select, uh, environmental issues. Things are affecting, you know, like the environment and then like come up with solutions about that. And I, I found it really interesting that a lot of the issues that students were bringing up in that project are some of the priority recommendations that we have in the Climate Change Action Plan. I just found that like little piece of information interesting.
Yeah, that's great to hear.
And I will say being there, there was, there was such an energy in that room. I was only there for the second day, but um, there was a great energy in that room and it seemed like the students that were participating were, were having a great time and, and I'm looking forward to what happens next year as you all outgrow that space, you know, uh, Board Member Boozer-Strutter and I were talking about that. In terms of just the group growing, continuing to flourish and, and have that opportunity for our students to, to learn about something that really is going to impact their career, their lives, um, where they built, how and where they built their families, what they drive, things of that nature. So um, I'm appreciative of the work that you all, each, each member of this committee is doing and creating that space for them. Uh, Mr. Jakut, I see your hands up.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Harris. I just wanted to say it was great to be able to speak with so many thoughtful students at the event. There's, there's so many different things everyone was bringing to the table. It was nice to get to sit next to the, the virtual reality. So I got the people that were waiting in line. So we probably had a few more. And I also, uh, wanted to say it was great to see all the different, um, tables there as well. I think the students had a really great opportunity to get to hear from a lot of different voices for future careers and for advocacy. And, uh, so I, I'm glad to see this event has been continuing and hope it continues for many more years.
Great. And as we, um, and as this committee, I think it's, it's, it'd be prudent of us to, to push this through to, you know, the full board. Uh, Board Member Boozer-Strutter, as we continue to try to recruit students to, to be a part of things like this. Um, and I think each board member should know that things like this are happening. I know, I know, um, not all of our colleagues are involved with this particular work and I think it's just important for us to continue to, to spread the good news of, of this group and what we're doing, um, as a community. Uh, Mr. Garcia.
Um, I also just wanted to say that like on an educational standpoint, I feel like, like it brought up a lot of awareness for a lot of climate change issues at the environmental summit. And not only that, but they put it in a way, there was like activities, like fun activities in the, in the lessons and that I felt like that was like something that was captivating for a lot of the students.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you for that. Uh, all right, colleagues, there's no other feedback. Oh, there we go. Mr. Witherspoon.
Hi, um, so, uh, I might be a little biased, but I think that it was a great event, um, and something that I particularly loved about it was how it like pulled students in, so like students would hear about stuff and then they would be like, hey, I want to take this back to my school or hey, can I talk to you? And it's just really cool to see like students wanting to learn more. And this event really allowed, gave students that, um, little spark to like, wanna learn. But yeah, that's fine.
And I know you all have, uh, you now have a social media page, correct? And we'll get the details.
The, the Instagram page?
Yeah.
You just asked about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think James started that. It's, um, CC, uh, CC, climate change, CCAP Student Voices, PG CPS CCAP Student Voices. Is that correct, James? The Instagram page that you started? It's not, it's not populated yet.
No, it's not populated yet, but like, yes, that's the name of it. And I, and like in the future, I wish to have like posts with information for students, even like, um, you know, just. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so up and coming, hot off the press. When it is populated, we'll be, make sure to, to push that out so our students can engage in those capacities. Um, Ms. Wonderlick and then Mr. Witherspoon again.
My, yeah, Michael brought up a, a great point. I was wondering what follow-up actions come out of that summit and how students do get to continue that momentum and bring it back to the schools and, and how y'all are supporting that.
Mr. Bill.
Yeah, so we, we, uh, have a survey at the end of the summit. Um, and some of those are about, of course, components of the summit and which sessions that the students enjoyed and what they want to see back. But a number of the different sessions were built around students taking back to their school uh, some action. So one example is, um, they, they participated in birding activities on both days. And on day two, uh, they got to, you know, paint some windows and glass, uh, to, to promote bird safe, uh, environments and zones. Um, and then they were able to build and, and paint birdhouses as a model, right? Um, and a few of them got to take them back to their schools. But I'm connecting with, uh, the scientist that led that workshop. Uh, hopefully in the next few days to collect more birdhouses to, to give to the schools to then do action projects on their school campuses. Um, and so that is one, one example of just one of the workshops. Uh, where we're trying to send that, that info, not just information, but actual supplies back so that students can engage in activities at their school. But then they, um, the students also develop an interest form uh, for what they created last year called the Student Environmental Coalition. And students, uh, last year, uh, three of our students created the student, four of our students created the Student Environmental Coalition to take the work from the Student Environmental Alliance Summit and, um, spread that out throughout the year. Cause they said, well, the summit is great. But we, we want to have additional engagement throughout the year. And so they did meet last week and they had a few additional members from the summit, um, that were interested, uh, three. There were four freshmen, which is awesome because we, we, we're in the process of losing a lot of seniors from that group. Um, so they'll be able to participate with the Student Environmental Coalition as they meet throughout the year. That's also the same group of students that hopes to plan the summit. So they'll have, um, additional leadership opportunities. I've talked with, um, the, the four H Extension Agent as well as one of the speakers from day one, um, for, for Black Girl Environmentalist about opportunities to connect with students just ongoing throughout the year. So both in a leadership as well as, um, opportunities to support students with action projects on their school campuses. We're trying to support them between the summits as well.
Thanks. Um, it would be great if the Environmental Coalition, um, had an opportunity and a reach to, um, even go out to like some of the elementary schools, the green schools and, and ask like big questions to them, like make them continue to think, like what are you doing to help, um, combat climate change or, or, um, you know, climate mitigation in your schools, just things that like are engaging. Not just the high schoolers and middle schoolers, but the, the, um, elementary schools as well. But that sounds great.
No, great point. They, and they brought that up. It, I, I think it was last week. They, they met last week as a follow-up to the Student Environmental Alliance Summit. And that they sort of, uh, started putting stuff on their, their dartboard, so to speak, for next year. And engaging with middle and elementary schools was one of the things that they mentioned and discussed. As something they'd like to do more of, um, you know, a- additional logistics right, are involved with that. But I, I'd love to see more of our students, um, getting engaged, uh, at that level.
Hmm, Mr. Witherspoon.
Hi, so, um, I'm David, um. Um, I just wanted to mention, I, when we were talking about the social media, um, Student Environmental Coalition also has a social media. And we have posted some stuff from the summit on there, um, PG underscore S E C.
PG underscore.
PG underscore S E C.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I just want to make note of the pages that we have. So again, as we create this hopefully like this one pager of information or it may like a front and back. Make sure that a- all of it's in one area. And I think that's the, the work of this committee could be to again make sure we're, we're spreading that news around. Um, Ms. Wonderlick, any other comments or, no, okay. All right, colleagues, not seeing any other comments for our feedback section for, uh, section two point three. I'd like to move on to section two point four for the priority recommendation number one. For the Supportive Environmental Justice Through Curriculum Training and Partnership, O2 launches annual climate-ready leadership summit. I'll now turn the floor over to my colleague, Board Member Boozer-Strutter, uh, to give us a report around the Leadership Summit.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Harris. So this flows nicely from our discussion about, uh, what, you know, what where are the gaps and where, where, what else can we continue to provide for student education and experiences? And at the summit, um, junior, uh, a junior at, um, Bowie High School, uh, who is very active in the clean transportation of, of safe walking, bicycling, um, is her main advocacy area. This is, uh, Roxy Adelike Wales, who will be a senior next year. She approached me and asked the very, she kind of addressed the very same thing that Maya had addressed me when I saw Maya at the, um, internal, uh, climate-ready summit for the school system, um, employees and around what are we doing to really go deeper on climate change? Like we really have to be saying climate change. We have to be explaining what it is, that they're feeling their peers, uh, just need, need more education. And I was thinking about our original concept of the summit in the Climate Change Action Plan really was intended to, to do just that, that it would be, um, that deeper focus on what we mean when we talk about climate change. And of course, why we have a plan that looks at operational and, and, you know, mitigations and and why we did it the way we did and also connecting to very specifically our CTE, our Career and Technical Education and how we are, um, preparing our students in all aspects of their PG CPS education for, you know, for what we're calling like the green economy jobs of the, the future. And, and really we're talking about the fact that, that there's no industry, no job that will not include an element of work that's about the realities of these mitigations that we're all doing. And, and of course, we're all experiencing through the school system and what we're doing here. And so are we preparing our students to, to talk this, to, to understand this language, how you talk about it? And are, to go out, out into the, the workforce. So uh, Roxy has asked if the committee would consider, um, if she has asked if she could be sort, sort of spearhead this, like that, that, that we discuss here, that we would like to, uh, move on this particular action item. Move on this particular action item, um, which has become, you know, um, and Donald, you, I believe your event existed before. We define this summit, right? The Student Environmental Alliance existed, had already, already existed, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so this, so this, you know, was in, intended to bring more directly. Uh, that climate curriculum, environmental justice climate curriculum, which is the start of this, this action, this priority area. With C T E and um, the, the jobs of the future. So uh, I guess basically my, my ask is, could we, you know, if the group agrees, we would go back to Roxy. And provide her this opportunity to, to help us with this priority area. Which of course, um, all, all four students on this group would be invited to, to, into whatever role they would like to. Also have, um, and to move that forward, you know, as a priority for the coming school year before she. Of course, she would love to do it before she graduates. So that is, that's uh, why I brought this forward. So I'll stop there, um, to get any feedback and questions about what it would mean to do this.
Sure, I think if, I think if we want to entertain as an X for the committee, I'm happy to entertain a motion for it so there can be discussion around it. Um, if you wanna proceed with that route. Board Member Booze Strutters.
Yeah, I, if, if we, we, I know it's listed as a discussion item and, uh, but if you, uh, if you. Declare that we could actually make a motion around this, I think that would set that it's a priority and we can begin the planning. And of course, um, Director Morrison, you'd be a critical partner in this with Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer. And um, 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 our dir- Director of C T E.
Definitely. I think that it, it is appropriate to have it as a motion, just so we can either vote it up or down based on the, based on what the committee would like. Um, and then that we can also have discussion around it. So I think it is appropriate.
Uh, so I guess, should I go ahead and make the motion or would anyone else like to make a motion on this? I see Kate's had her hand. I'll make a motion because I see Kate has her hand up. So I make a motion that um. That we proceed with priority recommendation number one, Support Environmental Justice Through Crime, Climate Curriculum Training and Partnerships. Um, Operational Action Number Two, Launch Annual Climate-Ready Leadership Summit. In school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Second. So colleagues, the floor is open for discussion around the, the recommendation of the support for uh, priority recommendation number one. Support Environmental Justice Through Curriculum. Partnerships uh, launching in the twenty-two, in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Uh, the floor is open for comments. And I'll actually give the floor to you, uh, Board Member Booze Strutter, just to coordinate the discussion around this.
All right, great. Um, Kate, I see you had your hand up. Is it specifically on moving this forward?
Well, um, is, I guess my clarification question is if. Um, would this complete actions with, within priority one? That, that, that just one specific area or is it, um, is it just one swimming for, for priority one?
But, correct. This is in priority one. This is um, Operational Action Number Two.
Okay, okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thanks. Director Morrison?
Let me get a few, I was just gonna double check my uh. My um, my climate action plan here. So this is really more of a clarification, um, cause I'm, I'm reading. The agenda two point four, and it mentions um, launch annual climate-ready leadership summit. So that piece, um. It's more understanding that that's already a given. So every year, we are going to um, do an environmental. Uh, I'm sorry, and uh, climate-ready leadership summit. But uh, we sort of like, it's, I guess it's the, it's the question to sort of incorporate this. And I just, I'm sorry, I'm not. Uh, recalling her last name, um, pronouncing her last name correctly. But um, it's the thinking here that we include the curriculum piece and sort of like the career readiness. Um, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the ask is.
Uh, yeah, good, good, yeah, definitely. So what, so the, when this action item was formulated. Um, there was thinking that it was more around. Um, bringing students together to fully under, to. Kind of more full, deeper understanding of the, that this system is year over year. Mo- moving towards a climate, climate change, climate mitigation, knowledge, literacy system. And that needs to be moved by student input as well and feedback. And that what we wanna tie together is this piece that this, that I've heard from both Roxy and Maya. That, that they're identifying that there is, that they know there's a, a gap. They're in, they're. Roxy's, you know, about to be a senior and Maya's about to be, uh, you know, going to her hi- high school. And they're, they feel, they feel like that, that we could do more. You know, and, and the summit really was designed to be something kind of new and different that we haven't quite done. Like, we did this amazing summit for the. For the employees, to all the divisional directors. And just to give a little feedback to everyone here that. Part of that presentation was we had an expert who actually took us all back in time. Around when this concept of the claim, changing climate started and when it started to be documented. And it started, you know, and these are, these are the kind of, this kind of knowledge that um. That our students need to go back to their, their schools as leaders. And how that links to why we're changing, you know, jobs in the curriculum. For instance, I mean, of course, like we could all, you know, start brainstorming, but I'll tell you one brainstorm I had that. We, I learned when I went to our C T E Celebration Fair at um. Prince George's Community College, which was a, brought half the high, half the high school C T E programs. That our automotive division at Crossland High School has an electric vehicle. They just received an electric vehicle on loan for two years from Dark Cars or Pohanka. And they now will have a electric vehicle curriculum. When up until that point, they've only had the gas, you know, gas-powered cars as the automotive program. And so that would be so ama- like to me, what'd be amazing is for students who've never touched that curriculum. Don't know anything about what's happening at Crossland High School, C T E, uh. Come from say Northwestern High School and High Point and other schools. And go and part of that summit is they see that curriculum in action, that they themselves may not be part of. But then, but, but it's that ecosystem of, of learning. And then maybe that C T E program gains so much popularity. That when we expand our capacity in the north through the new northern high school. That electric vehicles are part of the curriculum, because we learn the demand is there. And so that's, that's to give just some context for, I'm remembering back to the conversations we had as a work group. That that our goal was to really link this environmental justice curriculum with the green, clean, you know, clean energy jobs. Jobs of the future that, that we would be doing in our C T E program. But then, when you leave PG CPS, it'd be highly unlikely that you're not going to be asked to be. An expert in some aspects of climate change, because mitigation is just going to be part of every career. I hope, I hope that helps. I know that it's.
Thanks for that, appreciate it.
Uh, Beth? See you.
Do you have a screen cha- share? Um, can you do screen share? I think that for the benefit of the students and maybe even me who had to do a little research on this. I think that they might need to see how the agenda item. Two point four matches the eight climate change action plan priorities. Um, and that that environmental justice is number one. I think that those kind of connections for them as they begin to be more able to talk on these topics are important. For us to explicitly um, bring forth, rather than just like immersion in it. Uh, that's one thing. So if, if I can share, I pull them both up and I'll just make like in two seconds, those two links for folks.
Let's see, do you have that? Do you have permission to share?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, cause I just pulled it up too, but go, go for it. It sounds like you're on the right, in the right page already.
Can everybody see um, Priority Recommendation Number One here? This is on the PG CPS site. For Climate Change Action Plan. I just went here because it was quick and easy. And then. The agenda. I pulled up from. Here. And I just, I think that it's important for the students in case, maybe they already know this, but just in case. So here's this Priority Recommendation Number One, that's listed on our agenda of what would be happening today. And then this is Support Environmental Justice Through Climate Change Curriculum Training Partnerships. And then this, launching this matches. Uh, sorry about my Donald Trump. I'm watching the trials all day. Uh, support environmental justice through climate curriculum. So I just want them to see that connection that we're talking about this Priority Recommendation Number One. And then, uh, just a, a second on that same topic. Um, I think there are so many things, I've been listening to this today, that somehow. I don't even know how we would do it, making the connections of all the things that are happening through the Schmidt Center. Um, you know, we raise muscles in the classrooms at eighth grade that are then uh, taken back to, on a field trip. To the Anacostia Watershed, to uh, Bladensburg and then back in, they get a lesson, kids get a lesson. And um, we also have uh, walks, you know, there's so many things that I'm not sure. How we would make those connections. And if it sounds like it is important, I think that we have to have some sort of. Really a think tank on, okay, how do you make all those connections about all the things that are happening? And I did hear that there's folks in the elementary level that wanna make sure that's happening. You have butterflies with second grade, you have Camp Schmidt with um, fifth grade. So I'm just saying that. And, and I just, this is the last thing. I think that is kind of important to make. Because I do hear sometimes, I thought it was really striking when James said. I saw what happened in the classroom matched what I personally am applying to my life here. I think that sometimes it does fall a little bit flat. The kids have these isolated experiences. And they're not seeing how to make all of the connections. And it could be just that, okay, maybe fif- ten percent of the student population is very interested in this. And the other ten percent's in, interested in engineering and other things, and that's why they're not paying attention to it. I don't know, but I just. I think that. We have an idea here that maybe we should go further with and continue to discuss for a while. How and why to connect the dots in the curriculum.
And so what I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing is that the just to launch this summit will take. Will take some dis- will, that there'll have to be some very thoughtful discussion of linking of the current curriculum. And what the, the outcomes, what are these outcomes we're looking for? What, what is different and special about this particular summit and opportunity? Donald, I think I saw your hand. I see your hand up, up.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I, I think that's fair. Um, I'm thinking, you know, it is. Well, now I'm thinking is, I guess more of a question of. Like, would this really focus more on C T E? Because I heard that mentioned a few times, right? And so C T E has an automotive program. Uh, where students could see, you know, the, the electric car that they have on loan. Um, and, and then, okay, so then for the setting, are, are we talking about like visiting? The C T E, like a Crossland High School for that, or bringing that car somewhere else? Um, and then what, you know, what other sectors, um, you know, uh, like. Would, would the, would the programs, where the students build a house? You know, discuss some components of, you know, changing materials or electrical efficiency, right? Um, and, you know, in terms of uh, like careers and connections with that. And then, you know, it, when, when we say support this. Um, are we saying that this ad hoc committee is looking at, like, uh, the summit? Is it the, you know, is it the C T E department? It i- is it the priority one group under the C cap? Like, you know, what, where, who, who's galvanizing and organizing and having those conversations around? Like those big components of what that event would be. Because then, you know, a- a- all of those have to fall into place as well.
Yeah, it, it definitely more, more discussion. Um, so the idea would be that we would grow leadership. Um, that we would reach beyond all of us to bring in other, you know, grow other leaders in this. So um, like I, at, at least we, we know we have one high school student who's not in, in, in this group. That wants an opportunity that this group is providing, which is the go-ahead on, would be the go-ahead on the summit. So that, that would be one approach. And then anyone in this work group, if you want to make this your hands-on work for the year. Of course, could raise their hand and say, this is, this is what I wanna do for the coming school year, is work, work on, on this. So absolutely, there's, you know, we, that would be welcome as well. But every time, one thing we did learn through this process, well, as a work group. Or at least what gave us an opportunity to engage in how PG CPS does continuous systemic improvement. Is uh, that you, though you always uh, look to build more leaders. And I, I think our work group, our original work group modeled that, um, and that we could continue to do that through this work group. Uh, bringing in um, other interested people beyond, beyond ourselves. Beth?
Quick, so quickly, um, before Ms. Novick goes here, um, I, I have to turn off my camera for a second, but I'm still here. Just wanted to let you know, colleague.
Also not to miss the new schools. Um, so much learning opportunity in the new schools that uh, really. Can be highlighted, those bio-retention ponds, the outdoor classrooms, the daylight harvesting. The water bottle counters, the, so much and more and more new schools. So maybe even making that some kind of a focus as well.
Abs- absolutely using the tools that we have and the models that we have. Yep. So any other questions or concerns before you, uh, the group would be ready to vote on. Making this uh, operation, operation number two in this priority area. Um, an act- an action item for the, the school year, the coming school year.
Yeah, I, I still ha- uh, I still have a question. Yeah, how is it different? Um, than the summit, um, like, that's what Dr. Morrison said. What is going to be different about this presentation? Is this more PG CPS is going to present what they're doing at a student level? Here, here students, here is what we offer. I'm not sure how this is gonna be different, uh. Than the, than the S E A S event.
Right. And, and so that event definitely is. Um, education, it has a very high component of advocacy. Whereas what we're looking at, at, at here, i- is that. Uh, maybe I should speak to it in the Blueprint for Maryland's Future terms. It's, it's, it's around the college and career readiness. It's around the curriculum, how it's, it's being totally engaged in your school system's curriculum. And having the, and through this engagement, you may change the curriculum for the future for your peers that come. And having the and through this engagement, you may change the curriculum for the future for your peers that come. You know, who engage in this curriculum late, you know, behind you. So um, it's that feedback loop. And and honestly, I'm pulling, you know, this conversation, you know, the conversations I had with folks two years to over two years ago. When we were kind of imagining that PG CPS itself. Is a continuously learning school system that is going to lead on climate curriculum. You know, so we we that that we are actually doing it, you know, in a the in a very. Uh, deliberate way. And so bringing the students into that, that actual experience and seen beyond their their own school building. You know, which is a lot of what we do already, but it but this is really about. The the curriculum piece, like what are we building as a school system? Where where are we going? Oh, Chris Christina, then Donald.
Hi, thanks. Sorry, I had to shift location and do uh after school activities. So I'm in the car right now. Um, I hope you can hear me okay. Um, I did have a quick question on this and sorry, I might have missed some of this as I was in transit. Um, but if the goal is it or if the focus is on the curricular components, it's on the constant learning within PG CPS. Is there also a role then for educators within this conversation? I've heard a lot of students, I've heard a lot of the sort of CTE programs, I've heard a lot, I think PG CPS leadership. I'm curious if there's also the educator component as sort of critical. You know, change agents in classrooms, in schools, school leadership, you know, so on. Um, I'm sorry again if I missed that.
No, abs- absolutely. We couldn't do it without the educators guiding these planning conversations and being part of it. Uh, for sure. Yeah, thank you for raising that more specifically. Donald?
Yeah, there there um, there may be, and I and I don't wanna speak for CTE and and uh specialty programs. But there is a PG CPS showcase where like all of the CTE programs, right? Like you can go visit transportation and uh environmental and nursing um that is planned each year. Um, this this may or may not be aligned with like the the students' vision uh that you spoke to at the summit. Um, but there there may be an opportunity there to to have students learn about. Curriculum and like the the uh the courses and programs. While at the same time, learning about how each one sort of, you know, fits in and. How these different programs are connected uh to the C cap. Um, so it could be something for for wherever the, you know, the planning and pathway goes with it. That we do have a PG CPS showcase event uh where students go. And then oftentimes, these are the middle school students trying to figure out their pathway for high school. Um, and and you know, they're they're learning about the science and tech program and all of the different programs. So uh it, you know, it'd be advantageous to to consider that in the thought and the planning process. Of maybe there's a way to 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 pair with that or align with it somehow.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder and that that exact, that was the event where even I as a board member learned that. You know, this, the automotive program had already moved on this, you know, and so that was pretty exciting. I absolutely agree that if it can be paired with an in existing um infrastructure of of of. You know, what we're doing, I think that would be better for everybody. You know, the, you know, to not have to do everything from scratch. So thank you for that, a- actually bring that idea back around. I thi- I think that would help focus focus this if year one was about CTE is um maybe a way to get our heads around this. Dorothy?
Yeah, so along the lines of like who all should be involved in partnerships, I guess I was just thinking that. If this is going to be sort of like a focus on curriculum um for the purpose of career development. There's probably also a role for industry partners. Um, sort of, you know. Meeting with them, you know, trying to figure out what potential future needs might be. Uh, maybe having them um uh contribute to and I'm not um. First in how the whole process works in terms of the curriculum development piece. But to the extent that they're in that picture too, to sort of like um be able to uh provide feedback on on what it is that. Um, uh, the curriculum, the curriculum should contain as well as being able to offer, whether it's. Um, internships, apprenticeships, I mean, just kind of having us all kind of come together. With the goal being um having students be ready for the for the careers of the future. So that's kind of what I was thinking.
Thank, thank you so much. I love that. And you're reminding me of something that our committee member Antoine Thompson had. Mentioned when he was talking about what excites him when we did our introductions is I believe he talked about that he hosts a a clean energy. Jobs Expo, I think it might be a Bowie State each year. And so I think you make a fantastic connection to another resource that already exists that we could think about the about this. And and one thing I I've learned is that we don't have to actually think of the summit as this thing that happens like. One day for three or four hours, the summit could actually be multiple experiences.
Exactly.
That we could do that. So thank you so much for reminding me of of that component that could be so great to add into this. Well, uh, I don't see any more hands, so I will hand it to Dr. Harris to take us through uh. And we do have a motion on the floor. If you wanna take us through this motion. Think we're losing our committee members to the time being up, so. And I appreciate everyone uh sticking through this conversation so that we know that if we can move forward for next school year, we need the time. Dr. Harris, can you take us through uh the motion? The discussion seems to have concluded.
Sure, my apologies. Trying to get my. Pin so I can finish my notes here. Um, all right, so thank you everyone for the conversation. The motion on the floor. Is for the committee to proceed with priority recommendation number one for the support of environmental justice through curriculum training partnership. For the annual climate readiness leadership summit. Within the motion, do I need to note a person or I should just leave that open in it? I think that's fine. Um, so that's current motion on the floor. It's been properly moved and seconded. I'll do a roll call, vote Ms. Adeline.
Dr. Harris?
Hi.
Ms. Booth's brother?
Aye.
Donald Bell?
Hi.
Kate Wandelik? Joseph Jakuta?
Hi.
Christina, is it Quack?
Hi.
Timothy Meyer? Dorothy Morrison? David Nardo?
Hi.
Beth Novick?
Aye.
Ramon Palicia Calvo? Benjamin Roach?
Hi.
James Garcia?
Hi.
Maya Gudera?
Hi.
Olivia Thomas?
Aye.
And Malik with this.
Aye.
Sorry, I was muted. I have twelve in the affirmative. Just confirming that. Okay, twelve in the affirmative, the motion passes. Uh, all right, thank you colleagues for that. We'll be sure to write that up and get it out. To the community note here pass. Um, all right, moving on to section two point five is our last section of the night uh terms of discussion. I'll turn the floor over now to Director Dorothy Morrison for the Director of Sustainability Report. You now have the floor.
That's fine. I know everybody's looking at me like, oh, my God, don't talk for long. I won't. Um, a lot of what was on my report has already been covered. Um, of of course, wanted to give highlights that there was a climate leadership summit that was held on April the seventeenth. Um, over, I guess, sixty people were in attendance, including our superintendent, a lot of the cabinet members. Um, as well as um other school, peer school districts, um, board members, um. Harris and Boozer Struther were also in attendance. So thank you all for that and your support. Um, we've already talked about the the Student Alliance Summit, so I wouldn't touch on those. I wanted to remind folks that there is a May upcoming May twenty first Waste Wise Field Trip. That we are sponsoring. There would be an electric bus leaving from Sasser Building. Um, I think around seven forty-five. Um, it's gonna be roughly about four hours. Visiting both the recycling center as well as the composting center of the county. And this is in an effort to get folks to um. See the practical side of things. So we always talk about recycling, composting and waste reduction. Um, the field trip will give folks an opportunity to actually see how it's done. So um hopefully, um, I'm not sure if everyone in this group got the invite, but I'm gonna have to double check. But I I think it went to all the board members as well and as folks who are on the um C cap committee. And um, let's see, what else is here? I'm gonna skip a lot, some of these things. Um, I just also wanted to report that um because there's a lot of grant opportunities that are gonna be. Um, coming down the pipe fast and furious and continue to come and we just, we meaning um the administration just can't keep pace with a lot of these. So what we've decided to do um is to um consult. Or get a consultant in place uh to help us with that with that effort. So I believe the agreement was ratified today. Where we will have um a group, a consulting group, help but help us to not only identify all the different things that. Um, I know Joseph has talked about funding opportunities through IRA. And various other. Um, funding opportunities at the federal as well as state level. And they will also help us in drafting uh potential proposals. Those that may be applicable to us, like Kiva mentioned, maybe not all of these grant opportunities may be applicable to Pinzergis County. But most certainly the ones that make make sense for us to go after, that we will do that. This way, we're not missing out on opportunities to get funded. So I just wanted to say I'm very excited about that because. Um, that was definitely one of our weak areas where we, we, the money is there, but we didn't have the capacity to sort of like um identify and execute these proposals. So um, I guess the other thing is, um, well, I'll skip this other one. Um, I just wanted folks to know that we are, we continue to build out the sustainability and resiliency website. Which I sent to you a moment ago, Asindy, because I didn't see a way to put it on the chat. So um, but on there, we're trying to make it um as much of a one stop shop uh as possible to have um folks get information. And so if you click on the link, um, hopefully Cindy will share with the group. When you click on the link and you go to events, we have these these different tiles for different things. Um, so when you click on events, we have things like recent events, the the summit. Um, both summits, the both the climate ready leadership as well as Donald, the videos that you've generated. As well as um, uh, I guess the student, uh, James's uh narrative of his experience. So we already highlighted that, but that's actually under another tile that we've labeled here from our young leaders. And this is where we're featuring things like um written work. Um, you know, the video that I just mentioned, I'm seeing all kinds of things popping up, but anyway. So yeah, so please uh visit that and and um so that's one place we are trying to um. Hopefully it will sound also, it'll help us with our marketing um as we do this wonderful work. So folks can go there and see all the wonderful things that we could do. So I just wanted to make that point. And I'm gonna stop there cuz I know it's the evening is late. Any questions?
Um, excuse me, I have a question.
Sure.
So I just wanted to know what time this ended.
Uh, um, Mr. Chair, the Chair, I don't know if Dr. Harris is still around.
I'm here. The um, you mean the the time of the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we're, we were scheduled for six forty-five?
Okay. Thank you. Um, I actually have to leave early.
It's no problem.
Okay, thank you.
So um, it looks like I think everyone had a chance to grab the link. Does anyone else need more time? I will make and Director Morrison, the this this is now public?
Oh, yes, it's 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 been public, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just letting folks know, just again, just to let you know that it's out there. Um, so one of the things we might do, we might put it in a more visible position right now cuz I think right now it's hidden. You have to go under PG CPS departments and all that stuff, but we're going to try to have it more visible on the main. When you go to um PG CPS dot org, on that page, um, it's gonna be there. So that way it's not as hidden and people can get to it real easy. So that's what I'm working on.
Yeah, this is, this is great because it instantly we can get some of the ideas we've had about archiving information. We could actually get it right into a website for its archive.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that. All right, I think um, but make sure everyone has has this and will, you could go it, you could take the share screen off.
We can also be sure to include in our notes, our follow up notes as well. Um, Director Morrison, does that conclude your report?
Yes, guys, thank you.
Um, Mr. Jakuta's still with us, yeah. Hey, I see your hand up. Mr. Jakuta?
Yeah, I just, well, I had a question for uh Director Morrison. I was wondering if if there was uh in in between now and the next meeting, if there will be a. A look into scheduling a time to go to work on the food issues uh by uh visiting Montgomery County facilities. Um, I know that there was some chatter offline about that. So I just wanted to make sure that brought your attention and see if that would be something that uh occur.
Yeah, yeah, apologize. I forgot I was supposed to mention that. Let me invite you to to mention that. So this is um something that you, I guess you and some others have been planning cuz I'm not aware of that. But then, you know, we can talk offline um in terms of trying to schedule a site visit, definitely, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Actually, yeah. And just one, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know if it's maybe it's too late to to even mention this, but just wanted to give a quick, quick update. I know that I had said it concluded my um. My report, but I just wanted folks to know that we are um halfway through the process of recruiting. Our senior program manager positions that we have one, I think one offer has been made and there's one acceptance. But we are looking for two program managers, senior program manager positions. So um, you know, hopefully we'll get the second soon. I'm trying to get this done before. Um, I guess the June board meeting because I hear that if I missed you now, then it's, you know, September, maybe. I don't know if it's true, that's what I'm told. So hopefully we'll get, keep my fingers crossed before then.
No problem. And then we we have um the climate, the climate friendly food priorities in our next step as well. So it's something that we'll. Um, and we can, we can have those those offline conversations as well, but thank you for, thank you for bringing it up, uh, both you and uh Mr. Jakuta.
Concludes my report.
All right, um, any follow up questions about uh, Director Morrison's report before I move on to our next step? I appreciate you all hanging with us, and we're a little over to them right now. So moving on to section three point O recommendations and next steps, as I mentioned, next steps would be the climate friendly food priority. Uh, that that's one of our next steps we have here. Uh, Board Member Booze Strutter, you want to mention anything about that? If not, it's it's fine.
Yeah, that's the item that um, Joseph mentioned, which is that Montgomery County's, um. Uh, Central Kitchen uh, has invited us to take a tour. And so we're trying to figure out a date where we could get some, you know, folks from this committee Director Morrison and. Others who, you know, enough of us that actually have influence back into this committee. Uh, to be available, it's scheduling is just proven to be difficult. So I've suggested we wait until the end of the school year. That when it's just easier for a lot more people uh, involved in planning this, so they're all related. Thank you.
I've got a note of it. Okay, so the next Climate Change Action Plan AHA Committee will be held in June. Uh, we'll come forward with a date soon, as well as topics once coordinated with uh, Director Morrison and administration. So thank you so much for joining us tonight to talk about our updates around the electric bus fleet, as well as. Uh, moving forward with feedback from our Student Alliance Summit and the priority recommendation for the continued support for item number one. Uh, thank you again for joining us tonight, uh. The time now is around at six fifty-nine. Um, and seeing no further business, I would like to adjourn the meeting for the for the Climate Change Action Plan AHA Committee.
All right, motion to adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
All right, have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Cut the film.